Fourteenth, we're going to go ahead and get started because we've got an annual audit and budget presentation. Are you ready to go?
I'm not. You're off record.
All right. Should we sing some songs or something? I don't know. All right.
Todd.
Ready to sing? We've called the meeting to order. We've started. I don't know what you're doing, but.
That was a rough trip.
I understand.
He's died.
Had a little accident over there?
Yeah, extra 25 minutes. I'm glad I was planning to be here.
Are you ready?
I think we are ready, right?
Except it says presenter encoder no signal please check connection in the computer setup.
Yeah, I think we get through the first part of it and then we have some minor technical difficulties that we're working on to speak, right? Go ahead.
Yes, I am.
All right.
So we're going to get started by Ken, Mayor, Mr. Johnson, Scott. First thing I want to do is talk about our 2018 audit and with that I'll introduce our town proctor, Tim. You'll come up here and talk a little bit about it and we'll bring up our audit.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Tim McCarthy and I am the town proctor for the city. We finished our audit back in early December and the results were pretty happy with the results, but there were no findings. So talked a little bit more in detail is Heidi Hopkirk, who's managing partner for RSM.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for having me this morning. I did hand out a short presentation that I'll be going over that summarizes the stack of deliverables that we provide to the city as part of the audit, but we'll give you some highlights and then I'll open it up for any questions that you may have in regards to that. As Tim indicated, I'm Heidi Hopkirk with RSM and I was the partner on the engagement. We were out here for about a month in October and then worked through the review process of the financial statements and the audit was issued in early December. So today I'm going to go over some auditor communication, some summarized financial performance, and then talk through the single audit. So first, our auditor communications. As auditors, we have responsibilities of auditing the city under three sets of standards. Two of the sets of standards we'll talk about later in regards to internal controls and the federal programs. But to start, I'm going to talk about the financial statements. And under those auditing standards, you received an unmodified or clean opinion. What that tells you is that your financial statements are materially correct and we found no issues with those. There's one thing to point out within the opinion this year. It does have an emphasis of matter related to a restatement. And what that is in regards to is you implemented a new accounting standard and as a result of that, it has you look back and make an adjustment as of the beginning of the year, which requires a restatement. So I'd like to point that out, that restatement was not due to an error. It's due to the implementation of a new standard and that's normal and all your peers would also have that restatement in the current year. The standard was in regards to post-employment benefits. In the past, it's been recorded on a funding level basis, so it looked at how much were you required to pay, how much did you pay, resulting in a liability. In the current year, it changed and now it's recorded based on an actuarial calculation, calculated amount of the unfunded portion. So there's a larger liability recorded. All the information is summarized in regards to the restatement in note 15 of the financial statements, along with the new disclosure related to those post-employment benefits. In addition to the post-employment benefits, you also implemented a new standard. It's rare, but the accounting board allowed you to stop doing something this year. So as part of your business type activities or those enterprise funds, in the past, you were required, if you had a long-term project, to take part of the interest cost of the debt and include it as part of the capitalized amount of the capital asset. The board decided that to be consistent with the governmental side of the financial statements, where that's not being done, that they would allow you to stop capitalizing or moving those interest costs from an expense to a capital asset. So all interest expense now remains as an expenditure within those statements for those proprietary funds. As always, your financial statements have management judgment and estimates and as your auditors, we look at those that are significant. We do our own estimating and testing of underlying data. In some cases, we use third parties to help us with that. It is detailed in the report to the council if you're interested in those areas that we look at, but as part of our testing, we had no concerns and believe that all of those were reasonable in the current year. There is no audit adjustment, so the numbers that the management provided us at the beginning of the audit, we concurred with and made no adjustments to those. There was one uncorrected misstatement. These are items that we find that both management and us as the auditors believe are immaterial to the financial statements. In the current year, it had to do with grossing something up instead of netting it. The standards require as part of the pension deferrals that the projected versus actual earnings on the pension investments over the year be netted. Management shows this as a gross, so it is just an amount on the statement of net position or the balance sheet gross up on each side as an ask, as a deferred inflow and a deferred outflow. So there's no revenue or expense impact or net position impact on that. We had no significant issues that we discussed with management, nor did we discuss, have any disagreements with management, nor encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. We're not aware of any consultation with other accountants other than the couple of other auditors we rely on as part of the report related to two of your component units. So we receive their audits and rely on their information to include within the city's CAFR as part of our opinion. Any questions on the auditor communications before we turn to the financial? Okay, the next page is looking at the revenues for all the governmental funds. This includes your general fund, special revenue, capital projects, debt service. In total, you saw a decrease of about $15 million or 5% in the current year. The largest decrease is on the chart all the way to the right related to intergovernmental revenues. That's where your federal and state monies and grants come in. And you saw a decrease of just under $12 million. That's related to a decrease in grants due to capital projects, so you expect fluctuations as you have different capital projects going on from year to year and the funding related to those. And then there was also a decrease of community development block grant, grant revenues. And part of that's driven again on expenditures and the availability of funding. Miscellaneous revenues decreased about $4.7 million. In the prior year, you received that final, what I'm going to call a payout, or those monies from the state in regards to the franchise fee settlement. So they held the money, paid out to the citizens, and then after that time had elapsed that people could request those dollars, those remaining dollars came back to the city. You received that last year, so it was a one-time increase in that revenue base. And then you also saw a decrease in fines, and this is due to the red light and the speed cameras being off for part of the year and those fines not being issued. And all those decreases were offset by an increase in taxes, mainly property taxes related to valuation and property tax rate changes. The next page looks at those same funds, the expenditures. And in the current year, you had an increase of about $89 million or 26% in total expenditures. The largest area is coming from the debt service. And this is partly because of where your refunding bonds are recorded in the accounting world. So in the current year, you had refunding bonds of $44 million. So what that means is you issued new bonds to pay off old bonds. And because of the type of refunding they were, the payoff of the old bonds goes through this debt service. So you use bond proceeds, not operating cash, I do want to clarify that, to pay part of those expenditures. If you remove that $44 million, then there was just a slight increase due to normal principal and interest payments on your bonds. The other area to point out is the increase in community and economic development. You had about an increase of $23 million. The majority of that is related to spending of non-federal grants related to economic development, so a variety of sources there. Next, we'll look at the general fund. And here we look at the general fund, the equity portion of the fund, and look at the unrestricted and equate that to the number of days. What this is telling you is as a moment in time on June 30th, if no more revenues would come into the city, that your unrestricted fund balance would be able to fund your expenditures for about 75 days. In addition, the city does have a policy to look at the unassigned fund balance. Your policy is 15%. And in the current year, based on the June 30th dollar amounts, you were at just under 20%, so you're well over your policy. The last piece of financial information we'll look at is those enterprise funds, those business type activities. We look at those by each type of activity or fund. And we're looking at the operating income before depreciation expense, which is a non-cash transaction in millions. The two areas I would point out is you did see a decrease in parking and that was mainly due to the new ramp. And then you also saw a decrease in the solid waste system. There really wasn't any one particular thing within the solid waste system. We did see a decrease in recycling revenue of about $200,000, along with increased expenditures in workers' comp and vehicle maintenance in the, in the year. So the combination of all of those moving in the same direction caused the decrease overall in the operating income. The last piece I'm going to speak to is the compliance reporting. These are two additional sets of standards that we audit the city under. The first is governmental auditing standards. This is where we look at your internal control and compliance over the financial statements themselves. In the current year, we found no deficiencies within that, nor no compliance findings. In the prior year, there was a finding here which was remediated or corrected by management. We tested for that and saw that that was corrected. Then the last area is the single audit. This is where we test your federal expenditures, those federal grants and awards that you receive and the related expenditures in the current year. As part of that audit, we tested two programs, the community development block grant and highway planning and construction. As a result of that testing, you received unmodified opinions on both of those programs. We get in the details, we test for compliance, we test for internal controls. And as part of that, again, there were no internal control deficiencies reported, nor did we find any compliance errors or findings as part of that detailed testing for those programs. And as a result of those two programs, we tested about 49% of those federal dollars. The federal government provides certain percentages that we have to test for and this was above the required percentage. That's all I have for a formal presentation before I turn it over for questions. I do want to thank Tim and his staff within the finance department, along with the treasurer's department and many other departments within the city that provide us information and answers through the audit process. We couldn't complete this without all of their efforts and hard work, so we want to thank them. Then I would turn it over for any questions, anything I covered or didn't cover.
One quick question.
Sure.
You said the two major programs that you tested on that single audit, CDBG and what was it?
Highway planning and construction.
Highway planning.
Yeah, so the.
Is that a federal?
The federal, yeah, the federal grant portion. So you might receive outside grant monies. We don't subject that to testing in the details. It would only be those coming through the federal grant program. So sometimes there's allocation dollars that wouldn't be included in there.
Well, now that HUD shut down at least 96%, it'll be interesting to see what happens with the CDBG funding.
Could you, the community and economic development, you said that was on the expenditure side on page five, you said that was due to non, non-federal grants?
Mm-hmm.
Could you give me just some examples, so I'm clear on that?
Um, I didn't write down. Do you know off the top of your head?
I think a lot of that is the result of the hotel, the convention center hotel funding.
Thanks.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me this morning.
All right, Mr. Manager. Should we move on to the budget presentations from housing and general operation? As we're working on our technical difficulties, Todd's going to sing his second number.
Mayor, I could go through, and Bob can help me on this, what the future meeting schedule looks like. This morning, we've got the operating budget focused quite a bit on the general fund. And then on the 28th, I'll let you take over. Oh, actually tomorrow, we have a public meeting as well.
So tomorrow at 5:30 at the MSC building, there's, allows the public to come in and learn a little bit more about financing 101, why things can be paid for either general fund or out of road use or out of an enterprise fund. So it's kind of an educational tool at this particular time. We thought that was probably the best method because we're still kind of in flux whether we're going to have sales tax or not, and we thought that conversation can take later, or take place later. So it's just kind of an educational opportunity for individuals. At the January 28th meeting, it's kind of coming to close where everything we've talked about and everything we presented to see if there's any changes. In other words, we've already went through the CIP or at least the preliminary portion of it. Today, we're going to go over the operations of it. And then, and then we'll meet again on the 28th to see what, if anything, needs to change and then kind of give an outline of when we think everything will come together. We'll need to set a public hearing in the latter part of February for, I believe it's March 10th will be our public hearing on our budget. That is after, by the way, after sales tax, so we'll be able to bring a budget forward with or without sales tax at that particular time. Also gives you a little bit of time after the 28th again to let us know or before that if you see some things that you want us to change or look at before we get to that point. So that's the schedule. Did we, did we stall enough, Diane?
Yes, we're ready.
I think it's the 11th.
The 11th.
March 11th.
The 11th, yep.
I'd rather do it Monday than Sunday.
Than Sunday? As would I.
We'll get more participation.
So.
Can we go housing first?
We were going to do housing last time, so we have to switch that.
There we go, 21st century technology.
We can always do without it, but doesn't work. Right, so we're going to talk about housing services. Housing services really has two components. There are the Section 8, which is our voucher program, as well as our public housing program. That's, that's the buildings we own. On general, there's about 3,100 families or individuals that we serve through our Section 8. And there's still at least 3,000 each year where we can't get to everybody that has, that at least applies for. The public housing.
How does that number compare over time? Is that up?
I think we're probably about, generally, in about the same thing. Yep, it's in that 3,000 usually every year, a little bit above for the most part.
Is that from people that actually live in Des Moines that are waiting for the voucher? Or can they live all over the country and be asking for a voucher for?
They can live all over the country and ask for a voucher.
So how, do we know how many, the 35 is actually local Des Moines residents?
I'll defer to Chris to see if he, I don't know that number.
Actually.
I asked for that and I can email it to you. I got it by email a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, yep. Thank you. So of the units in public housing, we own, we have about 424 units that are, some are scattered around and some are like the 390 in the manor sites. And we also have a disposition fund when we previously had sold some of our inventory and those are used sometimes for, for gaps that we might run into. So we'll kick this off if I can. This, this graph, or this, excuse me, this pie chart shows you what the FY '20 recommended budget is. You can see it's a little over 22 million, almost $23 million. I should state is that a lot of that we don't have any control over and that'll be our next slide that we talk about, but primarily the HAP or the Housing Assistance, Assistance payments make up about 71% of what that is, that 22 million. So I won't go too deep into this. That just tells you the total budget. It's the next slide that talks about things that, that you as elected officials have more control over and what we do. And again, I should also say is, I'll go as quick or slow as you want. If there's more information you need, we'll, we'll provide it and go from that point. This slide does illustrate the recommended budget for FY '20 that excludes the HAP. That's done by the federal government and capital. So you can see public housing is 41% of the $6.2 million. The Section 8 is about the same, about 42%. And then the central office of that piece as well. Supposedly I want to use the other presentation if I could. Any questions?
Just this.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just, the central office, that's, I leaned over and asked Scott, maybe I was clarified. That's the administration.
Administration piece, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Because we're moving to a different report now.
This is still part of housing, I'm sorry.
All right.
This next one is our operating revenues and expenses. You can see in 2018 where we came in at and each, in each program. In FY '19, you can see what we adopted and then what we amended to, and then ultimately what we're recommending. So I would call your attention, in '19, we anticipated about a $456,000 in shortfall. It came out better than that. It was closer to $300,000 is what our shortfall was. Of that shortfall, we did add a new piece to it. We're asking some of our neighbors to participate in the cost of the Section 8. And in '19, we identified that, we actually were able to bill out about $75,000 of that shortfall that the suburbs would pay. And remember, it's that, that, that number that we're asking them to participate in is the same cost our Des Moines residents pay for the ones that are actually inside the city limits. So when we're billing it out, it makes up the shortfalls for each one of the units that we have. In FY '20, we're estimating that our deficit will be about $253,000 in total between the two programs. Again, that's down from our previous year. Of that, about $91,000 would be public housing and 102 would be the city section of the 125, excuse me, the Section 8, about $102,000 for that piece. The suburbs are those that we go out and do outside of the, the Des Moines residents is close to $60,000 is what we would bill out for next year.
And remind me how we bill out? Is that based?
It's a formula based on the actual, actually what it costs that we, that we are able to get revenues through the federal government and then the shortfall in that, mainly, that's mainly the administration portion of it. And then that gets billed out the same ratio that we charge our own residents.
It's the ratio piece, like what's the?
Well, it's, it's the ratio.
The percentage of vouchers that are taken to West Des Moines.
To use. Yes.
And there's a population piece as well, so that communities are not disincentive to not allow Section 8. Do not want the formula to be just on the number of units of Section 8 and you have, that you have in your community, because we could foresee that some communities would say, well, that they don't want Section 8 then because they don't want to have to pay into this program. And so there's a, I think half the, half the formula is based on just population and then the other half is on the number of units that happen to be in your community. We all share as a metro area in the need for affordable housing, so that population's important.
And are these payments voluntary on the part of the suburban communities?
We entered into a 28E agreement with them. It was a voluntary request and all, but I think three did participate in that. Any other questions about this particular slide?
Who's the three?
I think we still, I think it's on one of the slides here.
I don't want to say the wrong one if I'm not mistaken. Yes, there's a slide coming up in a couple.
Yeah, I see. Thank you.
Not a big surprise.
The next slide is the FY '20 recommended budget and for public housing and for Section 8. It's somewhat similar to what you saw on the previous page, only in a graph format. So again, the shortfall that we're looking at from public housing, it lists that number, which my eyesight can't see, it's about $91,000. And the shortfall in the Section 8 piece is $102,000. So it's the same as what you saw on the previous page. Now, what that is, is just a graph that kind of shows it, how it breaks down into each of the categories.
162.
162. I'm sorry. Thanks. I think it's 102 after we see the graph in the suburbs piece, sorry. Any other questions about this one? Okay. This is the slide that we, that, Chris, I think you'd ask about, or actually, maybe it was you, Josh, that asked about. So this does list the cities that are signed in a 28E agreement with us. You can see the three that are highlighted that we have not got the signature from that yet at this point. And again, it just kind of lists what I talked about before, about what their share per city would be in total on the outside Des Moines total.
In the financials that you showed us for a budget for next year, are we counting on 100% of it or?
Well, we're budgeting what we know for sure. We have the 28E, so we can, at least worst-case scenario, we have the proper funding in place.
Is there ongoing discussions with some of these two?
Yes, I've been talking with Ankeny, which obviously is.
Is the biggest one. The other ones were later.
Other questions?
Have those conversations gone?
Not well.
And it's interesting that if you look at, at the southern edge of Ankeny, they're getting ready to like double the size of the Toro. Baker went there. I mean, they have really, they have really gotten a lot of businesses to move up there, but yet they don't have the people that live there. They can commute from Des Moines, but they're sure getting, you know, we lost Baker to, to Ankeny that we, that probably shouldn't have happened.
I think they have the people that need the vouchers, they just aren't providing, you know.
Actually, they are there, provided there. This number is based on how many people are going there.
Yeah.
So we can't, we can't prevent them from benefiting from the program.
No, no. Yeah, they can take it anywhere.
Well, I am looking into that.
Ankeny's just not paying.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
If we have any. Ability to, yeah. Yeah. They can run their own Section 8 or they can try and hire out, that's what we're researching now.
That's what I.
Other questions?
They aren't providing affordable housing.
This slide illustrates the preparation of, of the HUD revenues. And you can see that as we did in previous presentations, that number just goes up and down. It's very difficult to determine where it's going to fall. Last year, for the public housing piece of it, we actually got about 92%. We're estimating that we might get 90% of that funding as far as what we put these, put this budget together for. And then the Section 8 piece last year in '19 was 80, 80%. And we're projecting that number could be a little bit lower. And in transparency things, as, as you know, the federal government is slowed down right now and some of those things might affect us in the future, things about when we'd get those payments. Questions? This slide illustrates staff reductions that have taken place over time. You can see back in 2011, the FTEs were 49, the FTEs in, 49 FTEs, and then in 2019, it's just a little over 33. So you can see we've had a drop over time. And some of the things up here that, that shows how we were able to kind of get through that piece. So the Section 8 with agreements with municipalities for Section 8 expenses, those were the change. Director retirement, we did have a director retire. We're still working through how that's going to look. Currently, I believe that's under Community and Development that's managing it at this time. We continue to do things differently, like online programming applications that speeds up the process, and then increased use of contracts. So we're continuing to try to go out and find other individuals than other entities within the, hopefully in the Des Moines area where we can get more contracts out there because in the end is, the more you have of contracts, the more it, it dilutes what the, the administration piece is because it's spread out over more units rather than the number we have today. Questions? This is the last slide and I'm going to defer to Chris because he's got a better understanding of what some of these things are, so I'm going to bring him up.
Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Chris Joyansson, Community Development Director. Challenges and opportunities looking for the next fiscal year. Obviously, the first one is future of federal funding unknown. Back in December, I know when we added this to the slide, I don't think we were projecting there going to be a shutdown at this point, but that is a circumstance we're under right now. Next one is RAD, which is the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. This is a program where you can convert existing public housing property to Section 8 project-based assistance. This is something HUD is asking us to look at.
Director retirement, we did have a director retire. We're still working through how that's going to look. Currently, I believe that's under Community and Development that's managing it at this time. We continue to do things differently, like online programming, applications that speeds up the process, and then increased use of contracts. So we're continuing to try to go out and find other individuals than other entities within the, hopefully in the Des Moines area where we can get more contracts out there because in the end is, the more you have of contracts, the more it dilutes what the administration piece is because it's spread out over more units rather than the number we have today. Questions? This is the last slide and I'm going to defer to Chris because he's got a better understanding of what some of these things are, so I'm going to bring him up.
Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Chris Joyenson, Community Development Director. Challenges and opportunities, looking for the next fiscal year. Obviously, the first one is future of federal funding unknown. Back in December, I know when we added this to the slide, I don't think we were projecting there going to be a shutdown at this point, but that is a circumstance we're under right now. Next one is RAD, which is the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. This is a program where you can convert existing public housing property to Section 8 project-based assistance. This is something HUD is asking us to look at. If there's a cost savings overall, this is something that we're going to be looking to convert to. The next program, Section 32. Yep?
So how exactly does that work?
For example, if there's a public housing, multi-family project that the federal government looks at what the operating subsidy is and the capital funds that goes to operate that building. If they change the funding to Section 8 rental assistance, if the building's able to operate better, they would encourage us to convert it to that type of assistance. What that would look like is instead of the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency owning the property, you'd partner with a, could be a nonprofit or a private developer and they'd actually own and maintain the building. We'd provide the rental assistance into the property.
So we would essentially sell the property?
We'd still be involved with the partnership in it, but yes, we wouldn't be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and operating costs.
And then everything would, rather than get a public housing subsidy, we would get X number, say there's 60 units.
Yeah.
We'd get 60 more Section 8 vouchers.
That's correct. Exactly right.
And then, and then how would it work if someone transferred out of that unit with a Section 8 voucher? Because those are.
Affordable. It works just like our project, our project-based Section 8 voucher program right now. You'd have, for example, if it was a 50-unit building, you have 50 vouchers tied to each individual unit. After a year, if the individual would want to leave and move to another unit, they'd be issued another voucher and they'd go to another unit and then the existing unit would still have those vouchers, still be 50 units in there.
So that's almost a way, add vouchers?
Yeah. Way to, way to keep the property affordable. And I think when you look at some of our property, one of the concerns we've always had, if you, if you looked, they've always been affordable housing and I think when you're, if you want to try to keep affordable units in the community, this is one way to do that. In the past, if you were looking to sell or dispose of public housing property like we have some in the past, you do, you are at that risk of losing affordability, so this is one way to keep it.
The new shelter downtown wouldn't have been built any way close to what it was without a project-based voucher program, which is the first time we used it, not just us, I think in Iowa. And I actually think more of those projects is the way to, way to really address our affordable housing crisis for lower-income people, not the 60% or 80% of median income, but. The lowest level. So. I'm a big fan.
The next program is Section 32, it's a homeownership program. Currently, we still have 34 single-family units in our public housing program that are scattered all throughout Des Moines. What we'd be looking to do for this homeownership program is to take 17 of those single-family units just to start out and sell them for affordable homeownership. Currently, out of the 17 single-family units, there's about five or six families that have been through our Family Self-Sufficiency Program and they've earned enough income over time that they've prepared themselves and they are interested in actually buying our public housing, single-family unit that they're living in. So one of the things we are looking at doing is putting 17 of these units into that program and over time, see how successful that program is and then look at our remaining public housing, single-family units at that time. Last opportunity on here is the project-based vouchers, just to kind of piggyback after Councilman Coleman's comments. This is one that we just did, I think you remember, I think it was last council meeting, there was a new low-income housing tax credit project by DMAC's Urban Campus. We did award some vouchers for that program. Annually, this is something we're going to be looking to do more in the future. The new low-income housing tax credit rules, they do offer special points for project-based vouchers, so I think if it's a project that we do see as a good one in the community to have affordable housing in, it does make sense for us to participate with this program as well. Any questions for me? All right, thanks.
One correction before we move on is I do believe we did budget for Ankeny's piece to get in there, so we're still working on that, hopefully get that piece in as well. So wanted to correct my earlier statement.
Dan, out of curiosity, what's their hesitation?
I can't speak on their behalf. Traded emails, I think Scott's had an opportunity to visit with the city manager, so I'm not positioned to tell you what their reservations are at this particular time.
My first conversations with the city manager were simply education. They did not realize there was already Section 8 in their community and so they needed to get up to speed that some of their landlords are already taking advantage of that. And it's not as simple as just saying, in the future, you won't have that program. They've already got landlords that are expecting that income on a monthly basis, so they needed to become educated first. So I'll let, I'll make more contact with them and get the final answer out of HUD as far as what our options are. You'll recall that the heightened sensitivity to this topic is that there is now Des Moines taxpayer money going into this program. And so it was very clear to me, made clear to me by council that if City of Des Moines is paying for this program, should we be paying for housing that's not located in Des Moines? And so that message will be made crystal clear to them.
Very clear. Thanks, Scott.
Do you want to move forward or do you want to wait for the mayor, our mayor to get back?
Nope. He had to leave for the appointment.
Okay, no problem.
You said you were doing a one-on-one session for him Tuesday and Wednesday.
There we go. I now know that now. The next presentation is actually operating budget. I do want, again, to say I will go as fast as, or slow as you'd like. I do want to point one thing out before we get started. There are no increases in the levies for a general operating levy. In other words, this does not mean the CIP portion we talked about earlier, the things you're about to see today is there's no increase in the levy of that, of our operations portion of it. So as we're going through those, you can keep that in mind. I think that's a good thing, right? These are just some examples of what we use the general fund budget for. That's the, that's the core services like the library, police, inspections, fire and parks. Those are just some examples of what we use those funds for. This slide is the general fund sources and use. As you can see from the sources of funds, 59%, about 60% of what we collect in our general fund sources comes from property taxes. Now, there are large segment of that is fees and charges of that piece as well. Fees and charges include things generated from service programs, indirect cost allocations, pilot and things of that nature. The other side of it is actually how we expend it and if you have any questions about the revenues, I'd be happy to go into that. On the expenditure side, the use of funds, again, just like it's always been, personal services is the largest, although my recollection is last year, that was about 80% of the budget, so you can see it's down 77. So the percentage of the budget has gone down for personal services for the upcoming FY20 budget. Questions on this slide?
Dan, what constitutes transfers out? It's 5%.
Well, you could, yeah, you could transfer to the CIP portion and there's different debt service, there's different things that get transferred out of the general fund into other areas as well, or back in in some cases.
Okay.
This slide illustrates a five-year history as well as what we're anticipating for FY20. I do want to point out, 19 has a little anomaly there. You see it's kind of spiking up to where our revenues appear to be higher. Predominantly that, the reason for that is we're in the process of selling one of our garages, so we'll recognize that revenue in FY19. And then in 20, we'll expend a portion of those and that's why you'll see a little bit of deficit in the 20 side of the, of the graph.
And that revenue is, that's what the other, the spike in the other is?
The spike in 19 was primarily due to the, the sale of the garage we're anticipating in FY19.
And that's under the, just in terms of the category, that's in the other bucket. Right? That's the one that looks bigger?
Yes.
Just to make sure I'm following.
Any other questions on this slide? This is our major general fund revenues slide. Again, you've seen the previous slides, what's made up of it. We do show the arrows of what we're anticipating for next year, so, and there'll be graphs on these, but the taxable valuations we're anticipating going up. Our franchise fee is staying steady. Our hotel motel is increasing up and our building permit fees have leveled off from the 19. And we'll have some graphs you can see, take a look in, and more in depth in some of these. So questions there? This graph is our history since 2009, our 10-year history of what our taxable valuations have been and the changes. And again, it's important to point out as well, as we're trying to forecast in the future, it is really difficult to always determine where we're going to be at that, so you can see it going up and down quite a ways. And that, that does somewhat limit us to going too far out, trying to forecast what those valuations might be. However, the green line or the second line you can see down there is called our, I think that's our status quo is what we would call it. We need about a 3.2% increase every year to kind of keep up with the previous year's expenditures. And then the last line on there, which is red and illustrated here, is our average. And you can see that's about a 2.63%. So again, we've had some pretty good years. You can see last year we had a really good year compared to our 3.2% and this year we're anticipating about a 4.1 increase in this section of the revenues. But again, we're always playing catch-up, those years that we were under what we needed and a lot of times when we're able to get over that 3.2, we have to utilize and go back and get some things that got left behind. Questions about this slide?
Can I just ask something because being new, is this erratic up and down kind of normal for cities? Or is there a more constant flow?
They're, they're, they're normal because the timing of projects are different when they come on. We've been in a pretty good cycle the last few years and moving that up, but at any given time, you can see we've been at negative.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Valuations as well.
When it goes down, it goes.
Yep.
If I could just add real quick though, that if you were to go back further in time, you would see the average is actually even lower.
Yeah, I just was wondering what the whole, or this is just how cities, the way the property tax and the.
Yeah, some of the legislative changes at the state level are being shown with the 2011 through 2014 changes that you see there.
That impacted it.
Other questions? This, this is our history for our franchise fee. That's the 5% that we currently put on our gas and electric. Just want to remind you that these are weather-related, so depending on the temperatures at any given year, we could have revenues that go up or down. We're anticipating, because we can't know exactly what next year's weather patterns are going to be, that we would stay status quo and, and we use the same for the 19 budget as we did for the 20.
I mean, it's based on the amount of energy used.
Correct.
So.
Yep.
So, you know, a couple of things.
Couple of things could drive it besides the weather as well, as we continue to add more buildings.
So, you know, if we got more efficient, the revenue might go down.
Correct.
More electric vehicles in the population, that revenue might go up.
It could.
And the variable cost of the utilities from.
The rates.
Yeah.
We can save a bunch, but the rates go up and we still make more money, vice versa.
I mean, Mid-American at least says right now that they're not, planning on coming in for a rate case for a decade, so the rates, if that, if that's the case, the rates are going to stay stable for the foreseeable future.
The gas rates though have.
The gas rates fluctuate, yes. And that, that's, that's the market.
Any other questions? This slide is our hotel motel tax. You can see that it's gradually going up over time, which is good things. I would like this, again, the shout-out for the OED staff that's been working with the private sector to bring more hotels in, which generates more people in here that stay in Des Moines, as well as the type of activities that come in there, different conventions and stuff we can get as we add more hotel rooms. So again, that's, you're seeing that increase go up and again, I would like to thank the OED staff. I know they're constantly working with outside people to come in and try to move, drive that as well. Questions? This slide illustrates the building permits. You can see in 2016, the city peaked, about a $700 million building permit value data. Currently, we're projecting that number to be about $500 million in FY20, which is the same as what it is was in FY19. I do want to point back farther, when we got started, our average was closer to about $250 million. So although we've dropped from that peak, we're still relatively a lot higher than we were four or five years ago in our process. Questions about what this, at least on the valuation side? And obviously with our actual revenue side that goes with it, so again, in 2016, it peaked. I believe it was about $6 million of the revenue when we were at our peak. This year, we're estimating our revenue from building permits to be about $4.5 million. Questions?
Maybe, maybe less you and more Scott and the building department. I'd be interested in the number of permits. I mean, I know we get a, a report quarterly, but can we have like a, a graph that kind of tracks this? Because I know sometimes the big spikes are because of one or two big projects. I'd just be interested in what the overall, you know, this is almost 10 years, what's the 10-year trend in terms of building permits taken out?
Actually, I can sit down with you and see what, because this is actual building permit expected valuations. So this is not our, our final valuation chart. And so you would be, let me maybe sit down with you and see what.
I'd like to see that too, and if we go back to one of the other slides, our permit fees were down.
And that's, yes. And so that's what the green.
And so I'd like to see what's going on. Why, why are we doing less building?
Well, and, and that's kind of to Bob's statement that we saw a peak for two years in 16 and 17 and we have come down from that number to about 500, roughly 500 million, maybe 550, it bounces between 500 and 550 of expected new construction valuation. That's what's on their permits and then their fees are based on that. So the fee, fees that we generate are on that 500 to 550 million annually.
And, and is it affected at all? I know with the floods, we waived fees, building fees for people that had flood damage. Is that taken into account or do we have a idea of what that was?
And we can check on what that number was, but that would not have been budgeted as expected, so it would not have affected our actual budget. And that would have been small or single-family home repair fees, so you're talking hundreds of dollars. So I, one of the things we can extract, Councilman Coleman, if this is what you were looking for, was some of the larger projects that have really bumped the numbers up in, at years to, to show what the outliers might have been. So maybe if we isolated just the larger projects, that might be helpful, so then you get a feel for what the normalized amount would be.
Or maybe, I don't want to speak for you in terms of what you're asking, but we get the, that building permit report.
Has everything.
That breaks it down by categories and that's on a monthly basis, but I, it might be helpful to look at the 10-year trend for those various categories in a sort of graphic form like this.
Yeah, we can take a stab at that and see if that's getting answered.
Yeah, this, I, I know this is the financial end, but if, if we're down from 10 million of revenue in 16 to projecting. in '16 to projecting, well, I guess...
It would be 6 million in revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, or 9 million.
What is the difference in total building permits? So, did that count 200 million dollar projects when, in fact, we have roughly the same amount of investment going on in our neighborhoods and small commercial developments?
Yeah, that gets to the large project. So, yeah, I think we can identify that for you.
Yeah. Yeah. Are we doing the same number of houses year-over-year, or has that slowed down?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Take a stab at that and get back.
This next slide illustrates our major general fund expenditures. You've seen this in the prior, some of the stuff we provided you, but this transitions us from revenues to expenditures. So, unless there's any questions, we'll move on from this point. You can see where that's at currently, where it's gradually gone up over the last few years, as you would expect with cost of living and things of that nature. Any questions about this particular slide? It just kind of lays out and shows how, what percentages or where we're at this particular year and what we're budgeting for '20. This one is our health slide. Of that, you can see that it's pretty, it's not exactly flat, but it's just a little over a percent, like percent and three-quarters percent increase in what we're recommending in the increase in our health portion of our budget. This slide illustrates what the general fund is by department. As you can see from fire, police, they're the largest pieces of our general fund, about 62% of it. Again, in there, there's a large piece that talks about administrative services as well, and it's illustrated on the graph. That includes the city clerk, city manager, finance, human resources, information technology, legal, and mayor and council. So, that makes up about 20% of our general fund department. Other than that, any other questions? I think it's illustrated on what they are there. This one has to take a little, there's a little narrative to this. You can see in FY '19, we're expecting to have a pretty large increase in our balance, but that's part of what we're doing when we're selling the garage. So, you're getting some of the, you're getting the revenue pieces of it as we sell it in '19. And in '20, you see a deficit, but we're starting to expend some of those dollars that we got from selling the garage into those future years.
So, then what's the revenue being higher in '19? I mean, is that...
That's the selling of the garage.
Sorry, not revenue, the expense. The expense is 7 million higher in '19.
The expenditures, for the most, part of the expenditures...
The garage, too?
Sure. We're spending some of those proceeds from selling the garage into FY '20. That is correct.
And as an example, we were looking at a capital project. So, instead of using debt, we were going to use some of the sale proceeds. And so, that gets expensed immediately in the year that it's spent.
Okay.
Yeah, that avoids...
Avoids debt and interest cost and issues.
Any other questions? This is our road use tax fund. Obviously, the majority of what we get is road use funds. There is a piece illustrated on there for, I think that's called street maintenance and things of that nature. Some of that comes in from our gaming money that comes into the fund to pay for things as the monies we get from Prairie Meadows for the gaming portion of that. So, that makes up a piece of what you're seeing in that 7%. On the use of funds, again, street maintenance. You can see all the items that are listed on there. Street maintenance are the major use of that. Again, you might ask the question about transfers. Again, that's transferring monies into the CIP, into debt services, and into the general fund is what makes that one, that particular piece of the pie. Questions?
What's the piece, I see, street trees, 7%. Then the brown one that's right above that, is that...
Transfers.
That's, oh, that's...
That's the transfers, yes.
Okay. Do we have another street maintenance?
Question under, or you can get back to me on that?
No, I'm just trying to figure out all the pieces of the pie.
Sure.
So, the large brown one is transfers. Equipment replacement is 12%.
Correct.
What's the blue, then?
I think that guy's dropped. It was signal installation units. He's got it dropped off. It's on signal.
It's in the printed, printed copy, shows it a little better.
It's signal installation and maintenance.
Oh, okay. It's, there it is. Yeah, okay, I was just...
It got dropped off.
Okay, I see.
This illustrates our road use taxes that we get, revenues we talked about. And road use taxes, there's other elements that go into it, but primarily, they're calculated by the population of the community as well as the fuel consumption. Those are the major drivers of what those are. There are a few other components that get into that piece. So, obviously, just as Councilman Mandelbaum said, is as other type of vehicles start to get more, either electric or not, that could drop down the amount of road use funds that come in, because now you're not using as much as fuel as you were before. But other than that, we're just, we're assuming a status quo revenue than what we're going to collect, than what we collected in '19 and what we will collect in '20. This next slide illustrates concerns and challenges for, that we would phrase, outside the city's purview to try to correct, but commercial rollback is one of those things that is in place, and it's at 90%. So, that has affected us over time. The second one, the apartment rollback, there was a new category, multi-residential, that was created in the past by the legislature. I'll give an illustration of what that means to us at the next slide, but that is something that's out of our control, what they did. And that does affect the income that we get in.
The apartment rollback's not part of the backfill?
No. There's a, there's a new category that's called multi-res. It used to be at the commercial rate, and now, as you'll see in the next one, it's more of a, it's going to eventually get to residential.
Half a different legislative sessions, even.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I knew they were different. For some reason, I thought that might have been part of the backfill. So, that's just me not realizing.
We were probably complaining about the apartments. At the time, we were complaining about the commercial property tax cut.
They happened at the same time.
So...
Yes. They've always been talked about together, at least.
Yeah, they happened about the same time.
So, we just... It's essentially on the apartment.
Yeah. I'll illustrate what that amount is at the next slide. The rising costs of certain things like healthcare, pensions, and construction things, those things continue to grow that sometimes are out of our control. And lastly, the legislature, I think, just did open up today, right? And I'm not sure what's on their docket, but we never know when we're putting a budget together, what might change during the time. So, basically, those are out of our control, and that's what we illustrate here. This is the slide here that talks about the multi-res classification that was put into place. And I'll just cut to the last thing. And so, over the eight-year period, we're anticipating about not quite $19.5 million worth of previous revenues we would have got through our taxes that we no longer get during that period of time. So, it does affect when we're trying to budget and what we're doing and what resources we do have. Questions?
What is the size of, when they say multifamily, how big can they be? I'm doing a, to get this reduction? How many units are in it?
More than eight.
More than eight? Just curious.
Smaller than that, even. I want to say it's three, but I'll double-check on that.
That's my recollection as well, Scott, was three, yeah.
Yeah. Either three or four, but I'll confirm that.
Okay, just curious. That's a sizable amount of money.
I might divide up my house.
Well, to a house that was...
Well, I understand it's to get the same rollback as a single-family home.
You already have it, so don't do it.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I mean, so, so the rentals that we see in the neighborhoods that are split into four or five units were, in theory, on the commercial rate?
Four years ago.
In theory.
Yeah.
Okay. So, every one of those apartment owners saves quite a bit of money.
Yes.
And they lowered their rents to pass on to the...
I've not seen much evidence of that.
I wonder if there's some way to track that, to see if, has anybody done a study to see?
There are studies on the rent. Now, most of that is average rent, but we can check to see.
It would be interesting to see, especially when you see the 3,500 people still are on the list for Section 8 vouchers.
Yes.
And out of curiosity, I know our fine friends at the legislature had good intentions in passing this, but how do we compare to other states? Like, let's say Minnesota or Nebraska, do they have multifamily as commercial or residential?
Only because I started my career on the private consulting side, I can tell you that every state is very different. Minnesota has more classifications. Nebraska is more similar to Iowa. And we could actually have that conversation. I can bring that back at some point.
I'd just be curious to, you know, are we the ones that...
It's all over the board. There are some limitations in other states that are very, very stringent, allowing only like 2% growth, I believe, in Oregon. So, there's a whole difference.
The piece that, and I don't know if it's possible to get this data, but I'd be really curious how much, how much of this multi-residential is, you know, big apartment complexes versus how much of this would be what would otherwise be single-family homes? Or, you know, a home that's, you know, like we're going to see on our agenda tonight, 11:45 and 11:47, 24th Street. Those were at one point homes, but there are six units in each of those. And, you know, you walk around the Drake neighborhood, because I was just there this weekend with our small pilot team looking at houses. I mean, there are a bunch of homes there that are four or five units. How much of those, because those should be in the multi-residential rollback, how many fit that category versus they're also in that same neighborhood, a bunch of apartment buildings? I mean, from a policy perspective, those two might want to be treated differently. And if we don't know...
If I can give this shot, so what you're saying is, but if it was a house to begin with, it was already at the residential piece. I think that's what Scott said. So, if there's homes out there, they already are at, at the residential valuations where the apartments that they'll become apartments are actually going to be a little bit higher. And then eventually, by 2024, then they'll be the same as what the residential is.
I got...
Maybe I misunderstood what you said.
I thought I got the opposite answer from Scott.
Did I answer that differently than you?
Homes that are split up, it's five, are, should have been at the commercial.
Right.
He was going back to...
Just understood, yeah, go back further in time.
As single families.
When they were originally built, oftentimes 60, 70 years ago, in the Drake neighborhood, for instance, they would have been single-family homes, subject to the, well, there wasn't this, anyway. It would have been subject to residential rollback, had that existed in legislature.
But did they go convert when they converted it?
At some point, they would have been converted to four, five houses or units. And at that point, it would have been classified as a commercial property, which was recently changed to multifamily, same thing. And now...
And now, those are being rolled back.
Right.
And that's what I was...
Yeah, that's a...
I think it's always been multifamily residential, like a five...
I mean, I'd just be curious if we have a count of how many of those exist.
I will check with that. Again, I'm not certain that there's an easy way. We'd have to do an inventory, probably sampling.
And if there, if there is no easy way, I mean, if we could just put that, I don't know if we have a parking lot of, we'd love to get this data if we could in the future, like if we keep that list somewhere.
I would think that we would be able to get it, like, they're probably in an R1 zoning district. So, how many, as opposed to a big apartment complex, would be...
It might be easier to just draw some geographics, a sampling, and say, in this area, there's so many that we can identify. Well, I'll take a stab at that as well.
Whatever is a sizable amount to Des Moines, the cost to Des Moines by this legislative action.
Well, I mean, those properties, I think, have a different impact on our neighborhoods than even a large, you know, a large apartment building. They're maintained differently. They have a different impact on neighborhoods in the feel of the street. I mean, so, looking at them as a separate category, I think, makes sense, potentially.
Bob, I think you have one more.
I do. You want me to use 10 more?
You got so close.
It's okay, it's okay.
So...
Sorry, Dan.
No, that's all right, that was good.
So, I believe this is the last slide. This is our concerns and challenges that are operating in capital budget. So, these are things that are in our control. So, the aging infrastructure, including facilities, there's things that have some concerns and challenges there. The neighborhood improvements by removal of light, improvement of the housing stock, the neighborhood streets and sidewalks, and the corridor improvements. And you have the public safety service demands, staffing and development. I think we've got fire stations coming up, as well as equipment. And then the last illustrates the demand for a high level of service for growing and diverse populations. So, those are some of the things we see as concerns and challenges that you'll take up during this budget process to see what we can do. With that, that's all we have. But if there's more information you need or have questions, I'd try to answer it. But if there's more things you need, let Scott know, and we'll try to pull that data up for you. So, again, a reminder, on our last council meeting of January, we've presented just about everything to you at this particular time. So, that's kind of a catch-up. Is there any changes? If not, we'll talk a little bit how the sales tax works through our state budget form, so we can see how that fits in there. And then if there's any data changes you'd like to see us do in any one of these things, that would be the best time to tell us before we start, you know, we want to start putting the books together here pretty quick to illustrate what we talked about. So, any other?
If you keep getting the green light from council members individually and there's not follow-up discussions, when do you anticipate going to print with the book?
I want to have that discussion with Scott to see where we're at and make sure that he doesn't anticipate it, much changes. We're probably ready to, probably not ready to go in the Capitol yet, because I think there's still some, a little bit that I've heard about, the operations. If there's not any changes in this point, we could probably get that to you a lot quicker.
But we would say the end of January.
End of January, I think.
February, very late.
Somewhere in there, okay.
End of January, could probably have the operations.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Scott, Jeff, Diane? Nothing? Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak? Any comments? Seen none. I think tonight, we're going to elect a new mayor pro temp. So, I'm going to declare a city emergency. And there's a few things I'd like to accomplish while we're adjourned.